Let's get started with our pre-meeting for our planning commission. First, we have the minutes from last -- well, I wasn't here last time, so I understand it was a really, really long and tedious meeting.
Do we have enough minutes to discuss them?
There's half a page here. Any questions with the minutes? Changes, edits? All right. First item on the agenda is Papa Pita, West Industrial Park. And it looks like Brian has this one.
Yeah, thank you. So, good evening to everybody. So, we have a request for a -- to amend the future land use map for the property at New Bingham Highway, which is southeast of New Bingham Highway. Let me just see if that up. Trying to get it up so it's a little easier to see, because this is not at a corner per se, but there we go. So, you can see where New Bingham comes off of 90th. This is just southeast of New Bingham and south of 90th. Mountain View Corridor is to the east of this property. They're requesting to take this regional commercial property and rezone it from the SC3 to an M1. So, this is similar to the request, if you recall, the Wattsworth property. That is at the right side of this in the lower corner, when they changed that from the same type of thing. As I'm getting information on the property, the original property, Jordan -- property owner Jordan Starr, has been looking for a large-scale commercial tenant to take over this and have struggled to find somebody who wants to be in this location. So, they've decided to break out pieces of this. They still will maintain their commercial property to the east of this, but they are requesting to change this to the M1 zone. They anticipate proposing an industrial park if this gets changed to the M1, to two buildings, roughly 400,000 square feet, and also a C-store. Let me just show you what that looks like. So, you can look here from 90th looking south, you can see the industrial parks south of this and west of this. And this is what they are looking at as far as the concept plan. This may change after this, but this is what they're initially looking at. So, they'll have a C-store with gas cells at that northwest corner of the site. Pardon me? Yeah, this is 28.2.
Who's going to run the gas station in the C-store? Are they going to do that or are they going to have a tenant in there?
Again, I don't know how they're -- they're just looking at spacing for how they're going to lay this out.
Okay.
They envision they would like to have something like this. If you know the area, there isn't a lot of service, support services, so this could really be a benefit to them. I don't know if the applicant is here. Oh, he is here, Andrew. So, if you have any questions, you'd be available to answer those. Any comments or questions at this point?
Just so on the -- one of the big things that my takeaway was is the realignment there, a little bit of New Bingham. Have we done a traffic study to understand the impacts to speed limits, traffic stacking, that kind of thing?
Yes. So, actually, our city engineer is here, but one, he's coming up. This is a request from the city to do the 90th. So, this is part of the city's hope in redesigning this intersection. So, Nate is here, if you have any questions about that, if you'd like to ask that now or wait till the public hearing. So, yes, we are looking at all those, the speed and how we're going to realign this whole intersection. So, this is a great opportunity to make it a little safer.
Great, thank you. Any questions, further discussion? All right, we'll hold it over for our public hearing. Our next item on the agenda is a text amendment for water overlay. And it looks like Larry is on.
So, I'll go through a lot of this at the pre-meeting since we have time and since you'll probably have a packed audience now. Just to -- as the planning commissions aware, you've approved a few businesses in what is called the drinking water source protection overlay. And that overlay is established around well sites or recharge sites for groundwater to protect the city's wells, because currently all of the wells in the city are used for coronary water. So, they all go into the drinking water supply of the city. A lot of the water, of course, in Western comes from Jordan Valley Water, which is treated at another location and then pumped to the reservoirs. But, of course, well water is not treated, it's just coronated. Because I guess Ammon's a water guy, he would know that, you know, water that comes out of wells goes through a pretty good treatment process and so. But, it can be contaminated with all kinds of various chemicals if you're not careful, because the aquifer does recharge. And so, years ago, the city established these areas around certain wells and recharge areas of the city. Now, the recharge areas are basically on the USGS map, and the west side of West Jordan currently is one large recharge area. I think because it's currently on their map, that may change when it develops, but I know it's just farm ground and mountainside, and so the water permeates or infiltrates into the soil pretty well. But, what you have to be careful of is around the well sites themselves, that there's not any type of, you know, herbicide or pesticide or oils or gasolines or dry cleaning fluid, all kinds of things that can readily go into the soil and contaminate the groundwater. And so, that's the reason that the overlay is established is simply to protect West Jordan well sites. Now, and the city had to adopt the original overlay through some type of study that was done with -- by professional engineers that work in this field. And if cities choose not to adopt a wellhead protection or a drinking water overlay protection zone, they default to Salt Lake County's ordinance. They have an ordinance that protects well sites, and so they would be bound by one ordinance or another, but the city chose to adopt their own. And that's at the requirement of the state of Utah, because ultimately, all drinking water is protected by the state of Utah. And so, it really is a good thing that we have to make sure that fluids don't enter into the drinking water. The current drinking water source protection overlay has been in place since the 90s, the mid-90s, so probably 20, 25 years, so it's been a long time. The map has been updated occasionally, and that's usually approved by the utilities manager. Now, I think that process worked efficiently and probably did a good job of establishing the map. However, this map can limit uses of private property landowners. It can put an extra condition upon private property landowners. And so, with the counsel of our attorney, we feel like it's best that these maps go through a public hearing process and they adopt those land use documents. And so, the public hearing process would be one public hearing at Planning Commission for a recommendation, and then again at the city council when the map is amended. And I'll show you what the differences in the two maps here in a minute. But, there was also some some changes to the text itself in the ordinance. They are minor. The planning commission will still approve conditional use permits for various types of businesses that are listed in the various zones of the overlay. That won't change. What has changed is the requirement on how the map is updated. And then also, the map needs to be done by a professional study, just not somebody thinking this looks good, because those are, I think, some very scientific analysis is done to see how water moves through the valley. And also, what was lacking in the last ordinance is that it really wasn't clear who in the water department was to review the CUP applications. And so, the ordinance would not require the utilities manager to review all conditional use permit applications. And the way the utilities manager for the city is Greg Davenport. I think you've all met Greg at one time or another. Very, very competent, been with the city a long time, and so he will start reviewing all those when they come to the city to make sure that he provides his professional opinion that those -- the drinking water is protected. Because if one of the wells were to become contaminated, the state of Utah would just simply say that the city can no longer use that well. And that could be, you know, that would -- and I've talked to Greg, and if one well goes out of service, it could cost the city between $700,000 and $1 million a year in cost to the city. And so, it is very, not only for the health of the residents, but also for the financial health of the city, it's very important that we protect these wells. And when Greg receives that application, he will also forward it to the water people at the state of Utah, which is required in the ordinance to make sure that they know what's going on around the well sites. It just adds a couple of things that we'd be doing this already, because most of our CUPs have not been a result of development activity, so to speak. They've been mostly business activity or business licensing. And so, we've just added that in there to make sure that that's clear, that nobody can argue that well doesn't say anything about getting a business license, but that's been added in there. And then, also, on a fuel tank for a service station, there was a requirement that it would be installed in a concrete vault, and that is well outside industry practice. They just don't put fuel tanks in concrete vaults. One, it's very, very expensive, which is beside the point, but it can be rather dangerous for people entering an enclosed environment of some type of vault to inspect a tank. And so, what the industry recommends is that in addition to the fuel tanks, which are already done a wild, alarm-protected, they have a saline solution between the two walls, and anytime that saline solution changes in volume at all, an alarm goes off, because they know there's a leak or a purge, and some -- the tank either going into the fuel or into the ground. And so, they immediately are on top of that to make sure that there's not a leak. And so, fuel tanks are much better constructed than they were 30, 50 years ago, when you heard all the horror stories of fuel leaking from metal tanks into the soil. And Paul Brockbanks here, he's the one, he looks at all of these, is going to ground, and he could probably answer any questions about those, but they're all alarmed, they're all alarmed at real time now. It's just not, we got to look at it once a week. It's right the moment the leak begins, an alarm goes off. And so, what the industry says is a good practice in a source protection zone like this is to put an impermeable layer around the excavation site. And so, that would be impermeable to liquid, either water coming in around the tank or fluid leaking out. Now, the changes in the map, the one on the left is the current map, and it's kind of a little bit difficult to tell, but some of the recharge zones have shrunk, as you can see. Yeah, particularly in this area, some of them have shrunk, where a lot of it has gone a lot farther to the west and impacts a lot more property. As you can see on this map, this is the gravel pit out on the west side, and it doesn't reach that on this map. And so, the science changes, how the water, how they track how the water moves changes. And so, hence, that's a reason that this needs to go to the planning commission, because it is impacting more people's property. You know, the circles are right around, the red dot in the middle haven't really changed much, those are right around the well sites, but the larger recharge area has. And so, I hope that I've adequately explained why this needs to be done. If you have any questions, we'll attempt to answer them. Nate Nelson's an engineer, he's here. I know Ammon has a lot of experience in waterworks, and Paul Brockbanks here, of course, too. He can talk about any hazardous substances if you have any questions about that.
Thank you, Larry. Any questions? Ammon, I'd love, I hope you're planning on being involved in this discussion, because you are our share expert.
That's a tricky statement, because as I reviewed over everything, I thought the replacement or the changes to the ordinance were very well put together. So, there's one, and I won't bring this up in the regular meeting, more of a housekeeping item. You've got a Rogue 4, 5, and 6, and one of the items, the lines decided to number themselves. But generally, I thought it was really good. Maybe one question I have, as we look between these two, you mentioned the area has shrunk. You know, aquifer storage and recovery is really becoming a big thing in the valley. People are trying to put water back into the aquifers, but we have it for rainy days. Typically, if you have surface water, really is what we're looking at for that. I don't think West Jordan has one of surface water rights, if any. That said, if you're putting, if you're injecting water back in and it's working right, you should be expanding the area again. And so, I'm wondering, do we have something in place that says, okay, well, this is what our current model is showing us, but let's add 20% to it? Or did we do anything like that, or we're just planning on every decade going through it again?
I think that the state requires a little timelier update to the study, according when I talked to Greg. I think that, you know, you're in metropolitan, you go street water all winter, and you inject it in wells in Draper and Sandy and stuff like that. Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's happening here in the Aids. I don't think they inject treated water into wells right now. I think they just use them as they're needed. And so, that's a good point. I'll talk to Greg Davenport about that and see, because that certainly would influence how the study comes out. But, I just have to rely on the professionals and what they, you know, how they analyze the data, so.
Injecting water's probably the most expensive water you can take. You don't want to, because you've gone through a treatment process before you put it back in the ground, then you got to pump it back out, so there's, you're duplicating cost. You typically only do that if you've got some sort of a surface water right that you can take advantage of in the spring, when you don't have a lot of demand. Put it someplace where you can bank it, and then in the summer, when you do have a higher demand, pull it out. Still fairly proven technology, but still fairly new within the valley, within Utah. I would suspect if anything were to happen, it would be more of a Jordan Valley trying to promote, and they're injecting the water, and then others are taking it out. So, I don't know how that would play out, more of just a question. So, I'm excited. I thought it was very, very well put together, and unfortunately, I'm not going to have a lot of questions or comments in the actual meeting as a result.
Thank you very much. Anything else for staff? All right, and I think that's our agenda for today. So, let's take a break, and we'll come back here for 6 o'clock meeting start.